There's Michelle.
I haven't heard any comments about the negotiations.
You'll get the salt from the beginning.
Yes, and I have talked to.
Give them the basis for the discussion.
Dating night last night for boys.
That's right.
Gary. Good night.
Yeah, we're live. I know, we shouldn't be because.
Everybody yell girls.
Yeah, all right, there we go.
Wasn't pretty. Wasn't pretty. What?
We'd see, darling.
Well, we were four.
Five areas.
Yeah, this, but that's, that loss means we won't have a home playoff game, so tomorrow's going to be a big game, big determining game. Because we really don't want to play Oxford Hills and Lewisson for our first quarterfinal. It'll be fun driving home from Bangor.
Welcome all to this joint meeting. We're going to try and get underway even though our star presenters are not here quite yet. We understand they are on their way and we expected them before this time. But because our time is short this evening with school committee having a full agenda and an executive session that we must deal with this evening, we're going to see if we can't begin our deliberations and get this going. And then we will break as soon as Harriman's here because they have a presentation that basically is going to give you the foundation of the discussion, all the information. For those that were not able to either watch or attend the building committee meeting last night in which the presentation was presented, we reviewed the latest, I'll call it the latest, it's not the final by any means, but the latest design concept and where that's taking the new EL, which all of us at this point are very positive about. We will share that with you this evening and with the rest of the viewing audience that was not available then. So what I will do to begin with is I'm going to have us introduce ourselves going right around the table. And why don't we start with Michelle, who since you're up there.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Scott Inear, Principal of Edward Little High School.
Bob Neely, Ward One, School Committee.
Holly Lasagna, Ward One, City Council.
Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Dan Poisson, Ward Five, School Committee.
Bob Hayes, Council, Ward Two.
Pat Guardia, School Committee at Large.
Mayor LeBeck.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three, Chair.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two, School Committee.
Leroy Walker, Ward Five, Councilor.
Your City Council, Ward Four, Mayor's Rep on the School Committee.
Andy Titus, City Council, Ward Three.
Faith Fontaine, School Committee at Large.
David Young, City Councilor at Large.
And last but not least.
Thank you. Peter Creighton, City Manager, and Phil Kroll is also here, the Assistant City Manager.
Very good, and we have Katie and Adam at the table joining us this evening. The intent is to discuss and have put on the table, basically to bring to light what we have heard from the community, what issues, what challenges, what concerns that might be there, as well as what support has been expressed, so that all the issues, we're aware of them all. Basically, we want to have everyone, not only us here in this room, but those that are listening, aware of what the concerns are, what the issues that we are being discussed or have been discussed and been deliberated, so that there's nothing behind a veil, nothing behind the curtain. It's all out there and what we're discussing and what we're trying to arrive at. Certainly, there's been an extensive amount of time invested at this point in time by the building committee, and it's important to understand that the building committee is a citizens' building committee. It's made up of citizens of Auburn. The subcommittees that were formed to support that committee, which were related to the athletic fields and the performing arts and sustainability, had more citizens involved in that with particular areas of interest or expertise. They shared their concerns. Out of that, with Harriman's help, we came up with a design. That design has been modified through feedback from the community. It has been reduced, changed, pieces eliminated, all in response to what the building committee has heard through the public forums, so that the design has further been adjusted. It's important that not only this group understand, but the community at large understand that the main DOE, which will bear the majority cost of this new EL, has weighed in as well and continues to weigh in on what this design is going to be acceptable, how much they will fund, what they will fund, how many square feet, where the windows are going to be, and that type of thing. They can get quite detailed in what they will allow and what they will pay for. That is an ongoing discussion. It is a fluid situation at this point. It is coming to fruition. We're hopeful within this month, actually, it's very important within this month, that they will finally say, yes, we are where we think this is the right design for your school and what we will support in terms of money. So we don't have that yet. We're still going back up to see them next week with a revised design based on conversations they had on Monday to adjust things. So that's essentially where we are, where this committee has heard and listened to what's going on and made recommendations until we have our current design. Have we heard from?
Yeah, so they thought the meeting was at seven, so they're leaving the Auburn office right now. But we can pull up these slides and go through them.
We can do that.
Yeah, so we know this well enough because we've gone over this a few times. And so what they're adding to this presentation tonight is some pictures, because people asked about, what does Google Stairs mean, you know, what does that mean, the community stairs mean, what is distributive dining? So they've added some pictures, so when they get here, they can highlight what those particular items are. But we can certainly go through the slides. Adam is going to pull them up.
That'll be good, so if Adam can get that up, that'll help.
You probably can.
So.
We also have information that I can also go over if we want to, that was put together around the auditorium, so I have some information about that that was asked for. We also have the list of questions and concerns paper that we can also dive into. So whatever you would like.
I think what I would do at this point in time, to again use our team time efficiently, is to go around the room and have councilors or school committee members, again, bring forth those concerns that they have heard from the community, so that they're out on the table again. We have had some listed and given to us earlier through emails and things, but those are in this document, I believe.
Yes, you can pass those, those are what I've captured from the emails.
We can do that. But I think it's appropriate that councilors that have had their ear to the ground, and probably a couple more in that way, have an opportunity to share that with the public, so that the public knows that they have been listening and will share their comments. So I'm going to start over with Bob, actually, because the others are on building committees and we know where they are. So Bob, if you want to, if you have anything that has not been brought up before that you feel needs to be aired again to put on the table, then please share with us what your comments might be.
I think I had a nice conversation with Alfredo this afternoon, which shed some light on some of my feelings. We have to make this affordable enough for our most dependent senior citizens. But I also like to highlight that this is a one-time opportunity, so we want to make the most of it and do it right the first time. But maybe there are a few things that we cannot complete at the beginning that we can privately fund later. So it's a very, it's a very, it's a tightrope we're watching, building something that's going to be great forever and building something that's affordable for all of us.
Very good, Holly?
I was one of the mayor's representatives to the building committee, so I feel I had a chance to voice some of the concerns I heard. One was the relationship between the school and the city in terms of access to facilities and resources. People have asked about that. Thank you.
Very good, Belinda?
That's on the list.
Well, I've heard from several constituents, they're concerned. Granted, our current Edward Little High School has served its purpose, and it's in kind of dapper needs and needs repairs. With that said, going forward, if we get this new high school built, what precautions are we going to take or programs in place to make sure that this building is taken better care of than what we've done to this old Edward Little? And then the second question is, with all this landscaping and ground stuff that you guys have got in a plan, which I think is excellent, but are you going to be contracting out for that? Or are you going to work with the city and have its Public Works or Parks Department, if it gets reconstituted, in charge of helping with the landscaping and keep, upkeeping of the ball fields?
Good questions. Dan?
That's one of the concerns that I heard too, was maintenance, maintenance of the, you know, are they going to be able to take care of it? Who's going to take care of it? Plowing, mowing, just general maintenance? And that's, that's one of the big concerns, to make sure that does last.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then make sure, you know, there's a plan for, you know, payment of that too. And then the other thing is all the, you know, furniture and stuff inside that is at all included? And landscaping, make sure, you know, all the landscaping is upfront.
Quick response, that some of the furniture is included in what the state will fund and very little of the landscaping.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah. Is that landscaping in here, is that going to finish it, the one that you're proposing?
That's what we're hoping, yes. That's, we'd have local dollars that would have to be invested in order to do appropriate landscaping, which I think is absolutely necessary to give us the type of facility that we would like to have. Bob?
I guess, actually, it was the differentials between base and going up to the add-ons and maybe the incrementals, for instance, the auditorium, the differential going from 1,000 to 1,200 seats, going, the cost difference going from six lanes to eight lanes, which I think is in the document.
Yes, we'll read that when we go, yes.
That'll be on this evening's agenda, yes.
I think that's important, and I think it's important because I think that, you know, the school department is responsible for the youth, K through 12. And, you know, we need the basics for their charge and their responsibility. I think as a city, we're also responding to, you know, the quality of life, lifelong learning, looking at facilities that would help us promote the community. So I think that some of these add-ons, I think, need to be assessed in that light, so that, you know, there are basic needs for youth, and that's the school department, but as a council, we have a responsibility to take this opportunity, maybe providing some of those things that we hear the citizenry looking for in the long term.
Very good, Pat?
All right, I'm going to be the positive person. I have heard from a lot of people, and I'm quite surprised, actually, that they're behind this. They're behind the whole thing, and I've had, amazingly enough, people concerned that we're not having the pool. And I've tried to explain to them about the maintenance and how we just can't afford it. But that really surprised me, I was, I was good to hear that. I also need to point out, and I think that you're all aware of this, but we have an opportunity right now to do something great for this city, both economic development-wise and also for our kids. And, you know, I'll admit it right up front, I'm an educator, but I think we deserve it in this community. I really, really think that we need to go for it. We need to do it right.
I like that, we need to do it right. You're absolutely correct. Bonnie?
I think we should do it right too, and that's what I've heard from a lot of people, that we need to do it right. We need to do right the first time. Fifty years ago, we didn't do it right. We had three referendums. The community does not want three referendums. I've heard that over and over again. The only negative feedback I had was from one family that shocked the daylights out of me. And they're very involved in the arts, and they didn't think that the auditorium was a good idea at the size that we have it. I couldn't convince them. I know Pat talked to them. Couldn't convince them on it. The other part of all of this is that I'm a senior citizen. I'm on a fixed income. And you know what? I'd give anything to be able to have the first-class world high school that we should have, after having gone to many, many facilities all over New England and seen the playing fields. And it's just amazing. And if we can do that here, then we're going to put ourselves on the mark, not only with the playing fields, but I'm looking at those with the performing arts. If we could do, if we could see our way through to do it, it's going to be a boom for us. Bob and I went to a soccer tournament. There were, we did it in Massachusetts. There were 1,400 kids. We did it in the Wellesley, Mass. area and surrounding towns. We were all assigned, the teams were assigned to fields at certain schools. It was hotter than Hades, and the kids had a ball. And I can, as I think back on it, I can vision it happening here, especially with our sports tourism on it, that we could have enough fields, enough facilities, so that the kids could take and we could bring in our tournaments from New Hampshire or wherever. So I truly think that we need to bite the bullet. I'll pay the extra for my taxes to go up. And my mother is 92 years old. She lives in a condo, and she came from Portland. She's been here 10 years, and she says, don't know what's the matter with Auburn. They don't value education. She said, I'm on a real fixed income and I'll pay the difference. There you go.
Very good, thank you. Leroy?
Thank you. I've heard from a lot of different people. One of the things that I was asked to ask the school department and the city council was, if we can't afford the $150 or the $200 or the $300 because of the income that we have coming in, is someone willing to step up and come up with a program that can make it easier for them to survive in this city? Or are they going to need to move to a smaller town that are paying $10 per thousand or less or a little more versus what we're going to be paying when this whole thing is done? $22 million is a lot of money. And 60 years ago, nobody would have even thought of being charged that kind of money after a school's built by the state of Maine, which is still our money, our tax money. It's still the oldest people that are around, they're still going to pay that cost out of their pocket all these years and be still tapped for another 22, or 15, or 99, it don't matter what the number is. But someone needs to be able to figure out, how can we help out the ones that can't afford this? You know, I've been retired now for eight years, and this doesn't hurt me either, I can afford it. But I'll tell you, if my mom was still alive collecting her big $710 a month, she wouldn't be able to afford it. And she never could afford to live in a condo, so, and she died at 75. So, I mean, it's that simple. Some can afford it, some can't. The ones that can, God bless them. The ones that can't, who's going to help them in this city? That's what we need to ask the question to. They're the ones that are going to vote and say no to this, because they can't afford it. $22 million is too much money for any taxpayer, unless you're a working taxpayer or you'll get a little bit of wealth.
Good, Alfredo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Council Walker has said. The $150 per $150,000 home is just an estimate for the school. It's not an estimate for two other parts. You know, we're looking at a school budget, we're looking at a city budget. So we're not just looking at $150,000 per year on taxes. We're looking at more than that when the budgets come out for both of the city and the school side. So we need to be realistic about that. That's the reality. The pool, I've wanted a pool since day one. You know, my kids were swimmers, they won swim teams, and we were really competitive. And if we can rearrange something somewhere and have a pool, I would be very happy about that. And I think a lot of people would be, because you have a lot of seniors who want exercise, they would like to have access to a pool. And we can't, where do we go to swim, you know, all year round or in the wintertime? So if we can look at some of these extras that we put in there for like another field, I mean, it's all sports tourism, so let's look at something we don't have. We don't have a pool, so if that's possible, that would be wonderful. A couple of things were already mentioned about custodians, that was my concern. I took a look at the grand scheme. Those guys do an awesome job, guys and gals, and I would like to know what impact it's going to be with custodians, because you want to make sure that that building continues to shine and is a perfect example. When people come in, they're going to be really impressed. And as a principal, I always said, I want my floors to shine. The third thing was, that I had was furniture, and that was already mentioned. And I'm, I know that some furniture will be going, but that means a lot of furniture will be purchased besides what's included in the cost, you know, from the project. So I'd like to see what that cost will be. So I'd like to see what that cost will be. I have a couple more things. The SOS Renaissance Program going to the ELHS is great. That leaves Lake Street School, I would like to have discussion on what's gonna happen with Lake Street School. I've been pushing and pushing for special ed, high-needs special ed programming, coming back, our out-of-district kids coming back, those that can come back, and I know we can save money. I mean, I have done that in other schools as a principal. So I know we can save money, and we really need to give serious thought to that, not knowing what it is. I mean, I know I'm a member of a school board, but I don't know what the plans are for the Lake Street School, so that's something I would like to see discussed and problem-solved at the school board level. The city is working in support of increasing and stimulating agriculture in Auburn's ag zones, so I don't see any programs existing on the CTE list, and I've been assured that that's gonna happen, but I would like to know how will the school support and partner with the city? It's a good opportunity to collaborate, to make sure that part of what we do in training involves encouraging and training young farmers and foresters. And we can do it, we just need to make this an important element of our educational programming. So I'd like to see some, you know, specifics in terms of personnel, who's gonna do what, and what the curriculum is going to be and when it's going to happen. Another factor I was looking at is that this is the first opportunity for the city to workshop collaboratively with the school, and we truly appreciate that. I think this is just wonderful, love it. And, but I know that we can't do everything in one night, we're on a time element, but we in the community need some time to process our questions and our concerns. Thank you very much, Chairman. I really appreciate your reaching out to us for concerns and questions. This was a really, really good thing to do, and I think you got some good ideas. So let's think of all of this as we prepare for where we go from here. And also, the last thing, I promise, is last night at the council meeting, we heard from Community Little Theater, the director, and saying that he was approached by the superintendent regarding locating, you know, the CLT program within the building. I think that would be a fabulous idea, I would love to see that. When you have a school that has, I mean, I'm used, accustomed to being in a school where you use the gym for everything, and this is a school that's going to have a room for everything. But the one thing that we can't do is have rooms that are vacant. So if we can make sure that our rooms are full capacity as much as possible, there are ways to do that, so I would like to see that happen. So I would like to know further information about the idea from, you know, perspective, and consider ways that we can use this auditorium and the other one, any possible day, night, weekends, and it opens up to the public, you know, our promise to open up to the public and have public be able to use this building, because it is, in essence, paid by the state and the city taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Very good. Alfreda. Andy?
Hi, thank you very much. My concerns, from people that I've heard, mostly have been concerned about raising taxes, and I've heard that since I've been a counselor, that every year we're going 3% and 5% increases just to maintain. So the concern has always been, well, now we have this project, not including the added expense. And so my concern, and I said it in email, was, we can build a school, but what's it gonna cost to run and maintain it when it's done? And we haven't seen that. Looks like there's expanded programs, other than tech that the state's gonna be involved in, there's gonna be increased costs for maintenance and running the footprint. So we know that's gonna be added to the budget on top of the bonding cost. And then obviously, we wanna be able to repair this facility going down the road, so we should be putting more money towards that to make sure we don't end up in the same spot 50 years from now. So there's a lot of other expenses that people don't see when they talk about the $150 a year, they might see in their taxes. When we compare ourselves to other communities, and I've been to those areas where you've got, as Ms. Hayes said, you go to Massachusetts, but it's a huge population base. The taxes in Wellesley, for example, are double what they are in Auburn. So we can't compare ourselves to Falmouth, which has an excellent school system, and we try to, well, it's a totally different demographic. The people in that area can afford a heck of a lot more than, say, Auburn or some other city. So we gotta be careful if we're gonna say we wanna be like them. What we need to do is just look at the expenses, the, if they're gonna build a high school for us, let's look at what we're gonna get for our $22 million that's gonna help the taxpayer, and also true economic development numbers and true education improvement numbers, such as graduation rates, or test scores, or other things like that, that can say, "Well, here, this is what it's going to do for us." I don't know if we can even do that, but that's what we're thinking we're gonna get when we build a new school with amenities, that we're gonna have all this stuff happen. Well, let's see if we can see it first, because I can justify it to taxpayers, say, "Yeah, you're paying more, but look what you're getting. At the end of five years, you're gonna see all these improvements, and your economic drivers are gonna be there." But I haven't heard, seen anything solid on that yet, so. I mean, I myself could afford the taxes also, but the people I've talked to are really worried because we're adding this to everything else that's been going on in the last five years, and what's gonna happen in the next five years. Thanks.
Good. Faith?
So as a graduate of Yale more than 20 years ago, I, it's, I don't wanna say I'm embarrassed to say that, when I go to the high school, which I have a senior at the high school, that not much has changed. And I have three kids. My husband and I chose, my husband lived out west, we chose to live in Auburn because I love the community. I love the fact that we have a tightness and a closeness, I can go to the grocery store, see people I know. Parents care about their kids, teachers care about the kids. I wanna live in a town that's great, and I love Auburn, I get slack from my friends that live in the southern cities, and, you know, "What about their school system?" And I know a new building is not gonna give us, they may not, it's gonna give us tons of opportunity, and I agree with you that, you know, we wanna see how is this gonna be a positive impact on the education. But I will say, I was very encouraged with, I know a lot of people, just as all of you guys do, and I heard a lot of people say over and over again, "I hope we do it right this time. This is our one opportunity, not only for economic growth, but for our students deserve this." The other things I've heard, like Fornier and Lasagna said, is, I've heard a lot of questions about, will the community be able to use the 1,200-seat auditorium? How about the turf fields, or what about the stadium? And I personally feel as though, being community, we should open, give access whenever we can, obviously, the athletics for the school department will come first, but I would like to see Auburn be even more of a community with this new building, and have us all come together and utilize this to the best effect we can. Yes, it's gonna raise our taxes, and yes, that's a concern of mine for people with fixed income, and all of us, I pay taxes just like all of us do, but I think we have to focus on the fact that $22 million, or whatever we decide on, is much better than funding the entire high school. For us just to come and do a base model and not stand out by any means would just be a disjustice to us for many reasons.
Okay. David?
We're sort of at a crossroads. We can go left, we can go right, we can go straight, we can go back. And you can look at it as a, you know, is this bottle half-full or half-empty? But the mayor told us, the last meeting we're at, we got some growth, we got people coming here. I'm hoping that a new high school may not necessarily bring people here, but it won't be a deterrent. And if we continue to have more people living here, more homes being built, then there'll be more people to shoulder the burden and support a high school. So I don't know what comes first, the chicken or the egg, but if we continue building a high school, more people will come here, maybe more burden, but there are more people sharing that burden. And it also said, if the city makes a commitment to bond something, then people will support that through naming rights and whatever. I don't wanna be one, be in the stumbling block for that to happen. I guess, and I'm waiting to see if the public will support it in the referendum. And if I think that I should put the brakes on, I'll make those comments at that time, when it's appropriate.
Peter, I'm gonna ask for your comments, just as you're a kind of a central figure in the administration of the city, and if you have heard comments either from your department heads, the mayor's directives, anywhere else that you would have something to share with us from that perspective, we are open ears.
And I thought I was gonna miss out on this opportunity.
Yeah, I know, you thought you were, and I could see you over there hoping.
[laughing]. Everyone has said a lot of important things. I, I just think this is a very important decision for the community. We do need to get this right. We also need to do this in a way so that we can afford this decision. You all know my thoughts regarding what's happening with the session of legislature. Phil and I were at a meeting today where Kate Dufour, who works for the Maine Municipal Association, was talking about the fact that the governor's budget is coming out this Friday. So we will see if the governor's put money in for increased municipal revenue sharing, and if she does, that's a good sign. That'll help address some of the cost concerns that people have. I think we need to move forward. As Council Young said, no steps backwards. And I will do with the support of my team, the best that I can, to try and support this process and work with Katie as the superintendent, and look forward to seeing the process unfold as we go forward. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mayor Levesque?
I'd like to defer my comments to after the presentation by Herriman, if I could, please.
You may, absolutely. So it was wonderful that everyone brought those issues forward. It's important that the community here, that we are listening to them, and that we are deliberating over those concerns, and we will move forward with that as we complete this process. But at this point, we ought to get an update of where we are. We have Mark Lee and Lisa Sowen here with us from Herriman's. They have been doing the majority of the design work, I'll say, the stuff that you're going to see, that makes this real, starts to make it real, that you're able to picture and what it's apt to look like. This is what's being presented to the DOE, and what they are commenting on, and what is being adjusted weekly, [laughing] with great effort, but it's an important thing that we share with you at this point in time to give everyone the idea of where we are today. That doesn't mean it won't change tomorrow, but at least you'll be up to date with where we are today. So, Mark or Lisa?
Very good. Thank you very, very much, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come and share the progress of the project with all of you. It's been a very important project for us. It's one where, as an Auburn, Maine-based firm, we feel that it's more than just a school design project for us, and so we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the community, and it's been, as Tom suggested, it's been a journey to get to this point. We're not done, we're collaborating constantly with the Department of Education. It's an important project in their minds as well, and so they're doing their best to be fair and deliberative with every decision that they're making in step with us. And so without further ado, I'll go through what we've got planned with the presentation for tonight. We're gonna just review very quickly the schedule. We have the concept site design, there's some key features that we'll review in the way of the site, one being a proposed stadium, the idea we're gonna locate the football field here on the Edward Little high school site, and some additional amenities that we're calling the stadium. We're gonna give you a sense of what the concept building design is at this point in time. Again, this is still pretty early in the design process, but it's enough that we can really start to negotiate where we think the design will be when it goes to referendum. And then importantly, we'll go through some of the local options, which I think has been a source of a lot of conversation, and then certainly available for questions to the best of our ability, so we'll answer any questions that you do have. This is the State Department of Education process for getting a new school, and so it began sometime back with the school department's application to have the school funded. We're now at step 10 or 11 of 21, so just almost halfway through the process of the, in terms of the number of steps. And we're meeting regularly, as Tom said, with the Department of Education. It's felt like it's been every week with them, and so we've got a lot of feedback from them. They're tasked with trying to be fair, but also trying to meet the needs of the community as they, as we present them to them, so. The, this is the site layout of the Auburn Heights and the Edward Little, current Edward Little, and the, there's a red dash outline, you can see the outline of the existing school to give you a sense of the scale of the existing school relative to the new school. So I think everyone may have received that in their information packet, and so, but the layout of the different pieces on the, on the site include a complement of not only the building and associated parking and needs of the school itself, but also the athletic fields. And so that was an important aspect in considering this site, is to get all the playing amenities onto the site. We heard loud and clear from the community, this was an important priority to them. What we're calling the stadium includes turf field, field lighting, a, an increase from six to eight lanes for a competition track, stadium seating, and concessions building. And so those features all would go in relatively the proximity of the current field and track that are at the high school, but it's augmented with the idea of potentially an artificial turf and lighting for evening events, and an increase in the number of lanes, and a concession building. And as well as new stadium seating, it's determined that the seating that currently exists at the Walton Field is, it probably wouldn't make the trip over, so. So this, again, gives you a sense of the spirit of what we're talking about with that, and again, those are the bleachers that probably wouldn't make it over from Walton, so that's just a sense of a little after-before-the-before, if you will. So this is the floor plan that we've also included, I think, in the information you received, and it receives tweaks weekly, but primarily, it really has settled down, and so 98% of it really hasn't changed much, but the idea that the floor plan is organized in a way that we have a classroom, what we call this private side of the school, classroom is on the left-hand side of the center where we, where you see the main entrance and public lobby, and so that goes on the, on the classroom wing that can be closed off in a incident where we wanna lock down portions of the building. So we've thought about security, we've also thought about where the educational programming's best fit within the school. The right half of the building is where we have the purple zone, I think some people call it, is the auditorium. What is shown on the floor plan right now approximates a 1,200-seat auditorium, and there are art spaces and music spaces surrounding it, and storage spaces surrounding it, to really create a performing arts center, not simply just an auditorium as well. Then we have the next bar, which is sort of a light blue bar, is the athletics and PE, and so there's an auxiliary gym in the very front of the building, there's a main gym, which is approximately the size of the current gymnasium at Edward Little High School. You're really fortunate to have one of the larger gyms in the state. It's got locker rooms behind it, and then it has fitness, or PE classrooms and a weight room behind it. The very right side of the plan is the career technology center or educational component to it, and so the programs that are part of the Lewiston Regional Tech Center, those programs are identified in that green color on the right-hand side of the plan. So that's, that's the primary layout of this. You can see there's a large courtyard in the middle of the classroom wing, that's to let a lot of natural light into the building, so that every classroom is afforded natural light. The second floor plan? Katie?
This one, because I'm listening to your question, so I wanna make sure you understand, so that the lime green is the satellite program. Those programs will service the region, not just Edward Little students, but the region. So right now, the region is served only in Lewiston, so it will also be served here. There's still discussion around what percentage of those seats Auburn students will have. We are talking about being the fiscal agent for the satellite program, so we are discussing whether that will mean that we get 50% of the seats. All that goes through the advisory, but when we talked to Rob Callahan, that is what was discussed around why Lewiston gets 50% of the seats in Lewiston, so we are under discussion. The dark green is our current aspirations program. Those dark green programs, we do have at Edward Little, 'cause his question is, what other programs are you adding? The, those are our current aspiration programs. One program that we've talked about is computer science. We have a teacher doing computer science, but it's taking away from science offering. So that's why we're coming forward with a computer science program. The teacher who is very passionate about computer science is also a physics teacher. So that's important for us to recognize that in the space allocation. So those lime green is regional, dark green is Auburn-only students' aspiration programs that we currently have. So I just want you to make sure. Also, the community use, Herriman heard that over and over and over again. So that is why it's designed that one side is- So that is why it's designed that one side is very community access-based and the other side is very educational-based for the students. So I hope you can see that. There's the community entrance, and then there's the main entrance for education. So I just wanted to highlight why you're seeing different colors. That's, those are the big different colors.
Absolutely, and as we go through, Katie, please interject, because we'll try to be brief with this. There's a lot of information to get through. So this is the second floor, where you can see largely it's the classroom component on the left-hand side of the plan. There's a component we call the wellness suite, which is the guidance, the health providers that exist currently in the school, as well as the nurse, and that component all is grouped on the second floor, right above the administration. So that's sort of center of the plan itself. And then you have access to the upper level, the auditorium, from the second level as well. The third floor consists primarily just of the classroom wing itself, with the opportunity for expansion, a very economical way of expanding the future. We build on top of the second floor, so we prepare it right now for the idea that if and when we need to expand, we haven't short-sighted ourselves, and we have a real clear way of increasing capacity in the school. And it's a fairly significant amount of area that we can get there.
Real quick question?
Please, yes.
That area that's not colored, that's for, that's a third-floor empty space?
Yeah, so primarily what we're, right.
That'll be a roof of the second floor.
Correct. If you compare the footprint of that second floor going up to the third floor?
This'll be a third floor, just...
It would be a roof. It's similar to what we did at Park Avenue. We built for two additional classrooms so that if, when we go to build, you can just peel off the rubber, it's framed in, and then we can build upon it.
Have to build upon it, so there's nothing there, that's not...
Correct. No, it's empty, it would be roof.
And then the last thing, when you talk about existing, the square footage?
Yes.
It's coming up.
Existing ELS and new, just want to know, does that include everything that we want on the wish list when they say 281? Does that include the auditorium and all the expanded other amenities? That's the whole thing, that's not?
That's absolutely correct. And so this is what we call a clay model, if you will. It's still just a digital model, but it represents almost like, if we were to construct a prototype in clay, it's not intended to represent materiality, but it to represent the form of the building. And so we also let everyone know that we will not be making a black-and-white school, that there will be actually color and texture to the building as well, so. But just to give you a sense of the overall massing of the building.
And that's parking lots in the black?
Those are parking lots in the black, and on the site plan, we've identified those. The state has contributed, or will be contributing, to 400 spaces. That's their current discussion we've had with them, which is in excess of their normal complement, but understanding that there is the CTE component here, that they've increased some of the parking. Right now, we've also identified a, and you'll see it when we get into the local breakdown, additional parking because thinking about having an event added at the school, either at one of the fields or at an auditorium, we want to make sure we have parking for that.
So with this model, where, can you just point out where the existing high school?
Oh, it's behind, behind here, so it's probably over where the word "school" is.
Okay, so that first parking lot is not...
That's, that's right.
That will be open?
Yeah, I want to probably go back to the site plan very quickly for you.
It's about 150 feet off the back of the gym.
So that red dash line is the existing?
Yes, I get it there, just with the clay model, it turned, I just wanted to, okay. Thank you.
So we'll just quickly highlight some of the spaces and what they might look like as part of that. Again, the plan is organized from a central spine at the, with the main entrance being identified as one, and the idea that coming into a lobby that has lots of the public spaces directly off of it, and the sense of pride that the community feels that the front really is the public zone of the building. And so this is an example of a school that has some of the amenities we're looking at, not, it's not intended to be an exact replica of what we're thinking of, but it has transparency into some of the learning spaces, has access to some of the more immediate spaces in the building, and a sense of what the finish is, might be in that. And the state will pay for a pretty basic school, not quite as basic as what you have now, but again, this sort of sense of, there's not, they will give you a building that has a simple entrance, and so as we think about the local considerations, and we'll talk about that in a bit here, that's one of the areas that we're looking at, this community entrance to the building itself with access to such things as a career technology, the culinary arts, having a dining room, satellite dining room here at this campus, and having that accessible from the, from that main lobby, as well as potentially a cosmetology program where the public can come in and actually make appointments there, the student bookstore be right in that public realm, as well as the library. So the idea of a light-filled library that looks out onto a courtyard is a feature that we're showing right now in the, in the plan. Again, contrasting that to the space that we have currently for the library. The courtyard itself, looking out from that library onto the courtyard and having views of more than simply just additional buildings or turf fields, so that, so we create enhanced learning environment and potentially even in a courtyard as well, where it gives us a safety of having outdoor spaces, but they're actually inside of the building and provides natural light into the interior of this...
This is not our design.
This is not our design, this is what might be. This is, again, just looking at, thank you.
Which, Bridgewater, West Bridgewater?
When we think about classrooms, again, the classroom environment has really changed, and school design is finally catching up with our understanding of how the brain works and how learning works, and really creating places that foster that. And so we're hearing more and more about it in the news every day, this is the four Cs, the idea that we need people to think critically, we need them to collaborate. And so those spaces that support that, sometimes we'll call them 21st century learning spaces, but they're essential spaces now in the learning environment, very different from the days when we all were in school, where it was just a double-loaded corridor, as we call it, with lockers and doors on each side. And so school environments are changing to catch up with pedagogy and our understanding of learning and the cognitive process. The second part of the central spine is what we call the student commons, and that really is a space that the students feel is their home base. And so we're envisioning a space that has, we're calling it a community stair, where you can see people gathering and interacting. The social-emotional development of students is an extremely important part of thinking about school design, as much as we think about the academic environment, we're also thinking about how important these spaces are to students. And so the idea that really this is their town square, their opportunity to congregate and to own that space. And when students have a sense of ownership in their environment, then they get a sense of pride in taking care of their schools as well, and a sense of belonging to it, which is an extremely important facet of it.
Also use it for educational purposes, is that correct?
That's an excellent point, Bonnie. One of the things that we're trying to do with every decision that we make in the building is make sort of as much utility as we can from spaces. So there's not, it's not just doing one function. So in addition to being a common gathering spot with all those tiers that students can land on, it actually functions as a lecture hall. We have, by putting a projection screen and a projector in the space, now we've actually developed it so that we can have a presentation in there and turning it into a learning space as well. And again, your current cafeteria, the commons also functions as the cafeteria, the eating space. And so the idea that students nowadays, the idea of not feeling like you go into a separate room for lunch, that it's actually almost a mall court, if you will, but the idea that you have tables and an open environment, and it can function, then more than just a cafeteria, it can be used for a study space oftentimes as well. And so the idea that it's very different than thinking of a cafeteria, and again, the idea that we want natural light to come into it, and when, again, when students feel a sense of pride in the spaces, they'll treat them differently than they will when spaces that look rundown and they feel that, again, the current cafeteria doesn't have natural light, which doesn't help, it has a very low ceiling. But we were amazed at the recycling and trash program that you have there. It's pretty well displayed in this photo. So the last item that we've been looking at is the auditorium. This shows the caliber of an auditorium that's being contemplated for it. And so it has amenities that really a lot of performances are looking for. It has excellent acoustics, it has the technical equipment in it for sound and lighting and stagecraft, and it has capacity for certain shows as well. So this, this is an example of a 1,200, or this is a 1,000-seat auditorium in Westbrook, their performing arts center, but it gives you a sense, again, of what's been contemplated for it. It's got a lighting catwalk that you can almost make out, I think, right up here, and the ceiling clouds, those reflectors, and it has side lights. And then that's an enhancement. Right now, at the current EL, we have a stage in the gym, and that's where our current assemblies of the sort take place, if they wanted to have a production, drama productions occur elsewhere. And so the stage in the gym is that space that they have right now, but the idea, again, of really thinking about not only this as the school's use, but really the community use in this as well. And I know there's been some discussion about the use of the auditorium. There's, I think, there've been several on the committee that have visited some other performing arts centers, notably, I believe, the Westbrook, as well as the Sanford, their new performance hall as well, and have some anecdotal information about its usage, but I'll leave that to others as well. Getting into some of the local items, we...
Excuse me, before we go any further, looking at all those photos?
Yep.
Taken at the ELHS school, current?
Those are, yeah.
They are, I know they are.
Okay.
But I wanted to mention, that's a testimony to how hard our custodians work. Every room shines, every room is in order. I've been in all the schools, and I know how hard our custodians work, but I just wanted to give them credit right here and now, because they work very hard and they do a fabulous job.
They really do. That quarter shot, it was amazing how clean that is. Thank you. So part of our trying to get a pulse on the community and understand the needs of the community, the desires of the community, it was several public forums. One that we had in November looked at what would be some considerations that the community would be interested in for locally funded options, because we know that the state says we have a formula for what we'll pay for, and there are certain things that fall within the guidelines that we provide. And so we had a list of several things in there that I think someone totaled them all up, and they're ranges on the upward side of $40 million. The subcommittees, the building committee and the subcommittees have worked really hard at looking to refine that list and to sort of understand where the value on each of those items is. And so I'll just walk through some of the features that have been part of our discussions. The first one is the auditorium, and as I've shared an example of it, I think you've all been provided some information on some of the particular details of it, but we estimate that the project cost for that would be about $5.6 million, and that includes the seating, all of the lighting and theatrical rigging and the sound systems, and supporting spaces as well, dressing rooms, storage, tech shops, all those that are really important to support something of that magnitude in terms of its amenities. The next one is the stadium, which we talked about would include artificial turf, which is an upgrade from what the state will fund, which is natural turf, field lighting, the grandstands with the press box, the expansion to eight lanes, concession building and irrigation. So that's the stadium piece right there. The gymnasium is contemplating, again, an additional above what the state will fund for a gym to make it approximate the size that you have right now and the seating capacity that is desired. The point was to try to get the entire student body to be able to assemble in the gym as well. Climate control for the entire school right now is being contemplated, it was a feature that we heard, and so what we've looked at is providing a cost to do that as, and that supports learning that we're seeing more and more expand beyond the September to June boundary. And in many communities, you've got several programs that are running in the school during the school year, and even in those shoulder months of June, we're getting close to July and August, September, the temperatures in some of those classrooms can reach upwards of, in the high 80s and even 90s. We've talked about interior features, and we showed you some examples of those. There are really several that we've kind of broken down, but they involve, run that common lobby, the community lobby space. They also involve that cafeteria, or what we call the town square, that student town square, and the distributed dining, the idea that giving students an opportunity to eat not only in that large area, but also having a smaller area for students, and it was something that was shared with the community. We've also been hearing, subsequent to sharing it with the community, that's really important for some of the students in that they're, those that don't do well in large environments, and I don't know if anyone wants to go back and relive their middle school, high school years, but the cafeteria can be a daunting place to be during lunchtime. So having smaller, more intimate spaces that are less of a social impact are seen as positive. Additional parking, we talked about. And the last item is landscape allowance. The state, as, we've got close to 60 acres here on the campus and a fairly large amount of development on that site. The state, doesn't matter the size of the project, they have an allowance of $25,000 for landscape that they will fund. And so, and so that doesn't get us much when we think about the site that we're talking about here. So while 375 may seem a lot over that size of that space, it's actually a pretty modest amount to try to get some landscape, hardscape into the site itself. And so that would look at areas around, primarily around the building and including the courtyard as well. And so the idea of trying to create a little bit more of a buffer, they, the $25,000 would get us maybe a few trees and not a lot more. And so this tries to provide a context of the campus that doesn't make it feel like a barren place of just buildings and pavement and a few fields. So this is simply the breakdown of those that we've already provided. I won't go through those, I think you've seen them. If you do have questions, we certainly can answer those, but that gave you some amount of the breakdown of costs.
I have one question.
One, oh, thank you very much. Lisa, I'll let you actually address that. Thank you.
So the base bid that we just went over is summarized at the top, the auditorium, the stadium, the gym, climate control, parking, interior features, and landscaping. The line item below that is what we have listed as program space. And so the state has a very prescriptive formula as to what they will fund for square footage per student. So as we put the design together and we look at where, you know, take all the program elements that we need to fit into this building, and we look at the 185 per square feet they allow per student, and our projections that they have us do for enrollment show that we have to design this for 1,100 students, we have a delta of square footage beyond what the state will fund for 185 square feet per student, and this is program-related space. This isn't the theater, this isn't the expanded gym. And so it's about 13,700 square feet, and so for the project cost for that, it's about six point, almost $6.5 million for the program space. And then the other two additional items that we're looking at are geothermal heating and cooling, and the state will pay for half of that cost. So if we were to pay for the full cost, it would be about a seven-to-10-year payback, but the state is paying for half, and so that's why it's about $1.4 million now instead of almost $3 million. And it will be about a three to, three to seven-year payback, I think, somewhere in that ballpark. And we'll know more as we get into the fine detail of the design. But the second turf field is another item that's on the list, and that's about $700,000 project cost for that.
Excuse me, could I ask a question about the geothermal heating and cooling? Is that related to, or does it displace the climate control?
It does not. So the state for climate control will pay for some spaces, very few, the administration and the library, and that's it. The line item you see for the climate control is the additive cost above what the state pays for for full building, and then the geothermal is the added cost for just the geothermal to be added to the project.
Okay, thank you. I wish I had it at my house.
Can I ask you a question about the second turf field? You're gonna have two turf fields?
We are listing two turf fields and talking to the school, it provides a lot more flexibility for programming. for programming, so that they can use, they can have different sports playing at different times throughout the year. I believe Lewiston has two, two turf fields as well.
And those are working well, from what I understand.
So how many square feet did we add to the gym?
I believe it's about 750 square feet.
That would bring it up near to what we have now.
Correct.
And as I remember that, that's a, an item that way back, two, two sessions ago, on the building committee, that the committee felt that it needed to have a gym that was our size, because we have supposedly one of the best gyms in the state, except that it bleeds heat going through the ceilings and the sides. But the size of the gym was very important to, to the community.
I'm gonna, we're gonna bring this to a close fairly soon now, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just shut it off, obviously, but-
And just so people know, we're gonna schedule another meeting, obviously we-
Right, we will, and I was gonna get there.
Yeah, yeah.
The mayor has some closing comments, but I'm, I'm gonna ask if, if any counselor or school committee members has something they would like to share before the mayor at this point, if they have-
The only thing I'm gonna add is I'm gonna give information for the people to digest about the auditorium.
Right.
Okay, that, because I know you all like to read and, and ask questions. The front page, somebody had asked, what do we do right now for use across the community? And then on the back is a quote from the Sanford Performing Arts Director, and information from the Westbrook forming. So I'll just give that to you while Tom finishes-
Yep, alright.
And while the mayor finishes.
So, Mary-Lou-
Can I just say one thing, I'm sorry? I would just like to say thank you to all of those who are attending tonight. I know that we have building committee people here, we have the performing arts subcommittee here, we have the athletic committee here. So I want to thank you very much for coming out tonight. It's very much appreciative, and we want you to come back.
Very good. Mayor Lovett?
Thank you, Ms. Trump. Thank you for kind of letting me wrap this up, it was a lot of good questions, and, you know, I'm definitely gonna encourage that we have weekly meetings going forward until it's time for the council to vote on this. There's a lot of answers that, or questions out there that have yet to be unanswered, and they're good questions. I am gonna kind of give, if I could, and hopefully we all can take it to heart, some advice on the process going forward over the next few weeks, working with the school committee, and this is primarily to the council, that we look at a, a process that starts with what is the local option cost in a worst-case scenario? And school, municipality, we all look at every possible, very imaginative source, and how we're gonna take this local share down, or reduce it on, from the, from the taxpayer's shoulders, so to speak. I don't like to use such, you know, analogies, but we do have to be conscious of that. That's something that we've all heard. We have to look at it, we deserve, this process of the committee that comes before us, we des, they deserve to have their plans, and that of herriments and so forth, be fully vetted. I don't want to get into the, the discussions going forward of, do we need a second gym? Do we need 1,200 seats versus 1,000? That would be improper. What is proper is looking how the affordability of what's currently in the plan can work within the city, utilizing our current assets, how it could stimulate growth based upon some assumptions that are founded in data from municipalities and other parts of the, of the state and the region. Before we even go through the value, the value engineering, I'm not sure if there's another term for that, Herriman? Was that it, value engineering?
I think, I think that describes it well.
Value engineering is usually the very, very, very last thing that we do. Before that, we're gonna have these hard, I think, and very frankly, hard conversations about cost-cutting and other, other areas. How do we maximize the usage of the community through certain aspects of this high school? And answer fully all the questions that have been proposed by council and by the school committee. I think this is a good process so far, I'd like to thank everybody for doing that. I'm not gonna put my architect hat on and play architect, it's not the right time, okay? A lot of smarter people have done that in the community and in Herriman. So I'd like to thank you all for that. And I'd like to thank Chairman Kendall for convening this workshop, and I look forward to hopefully more next week, and the following week, and the following week, until we solve this problem.
Great, I'm not gonna let him have the last word like he thought he would.
[laughter]
Because it is my meeting, nothing else. I think it's appropriate to, for, for the information that you've been presented, it's gonna take time to digest it, and I'm gonna give you about a week. There are solutions out there. I'm challenging us all to think about those solutions, to address the concerns that have been raised here. I ask the community to share with their representatives on the school committee and on the council their thoughts about, one, are we going in the right direction or the wrong direction, or if they have ideas, creative ideas about how we address this. Mr. Titus brings up the concern, I think that's on the forefront of everyone's thoughts, is how do we afford this? I don't think that's a, a very unreasonable request, that we address that, and I believe we will. We, we are hopeful that we're going to get a, a firm number from the state in a very short period of time. There are additional column irons in the fire that will affect how the city will fund or support this, and what the burden will be on taxpayers. To get us the facility and the new high school that this community deserves, and has for 60 years lacked, it's something that we don't want to miss. It's something that we as a community are, it's important that we do this for the community and for our students. So I invite everyone to be creative and to be resourceful in how we look at this challenge, and that we solve it in the next few weeks. So thank you very much for being here, and we'll look forward to our next meeting, which we will notify you as soon as we, the mayor and I can get together and figure a good date. Thank you again.
There we go, we're back. I declare us back in regular session, returning from our executive session, which we had a particular item we had to discuss, and that is bringing us to a point where we'd like to add an item to the agenda to deal with the executive session topic. So I need a motion to add to the agenda, a...
Tom, I have a motion to add to the agenda, an item that's necessary for tonight, yes.
To be discussed tonight. Second to that motion to add an item to the agenda?
Seconds.
Great, all those in favor, bring this forward. Very good. So we have a motion, Bonnie?
Yes. Alright, the motion is, I move that the school committee authorize the committee chair to enter into the proposed agreements with the Auburn Education Association, the International Association of Machinists Local, and the Auburn Administrators Union, in accordance with the terms discussed in the executive session, and that the chair be authorized to execute such agreements once finalized. I further move that the school committee authorize the business office and legal counsel to extend proposals to the non-union individuals in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone have any question? Seeing none, all those in favor, clear it, pass. Thank you very much for that. We will move into our regular agenda. I will begin, actually, we'll begin this with the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start right at the very top, how's that?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got the chair up.
Good, thank you.
Introductions, we're going to start with Michelle.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfreda Fornier, City Council, Ward Four, Representative of the Mayor.
Dan Poisson, Ward Five.
Pat Garcia, at large.
Katie Grannis, Superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Bob Manili, Ward One.
And are there any communications people have received that they'd like to share beyond what we had shared at our workshop with the city council concerning the new high school, but we've aired that pretty well, I think. Seeing nothing, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which...
Wait a minute, sorry, I didn't have...
Yes.
I just want to congratulate Wall. Most people know Wall, and last night he hit his thousandth point at EL, so I wasn't there, I was at the girls' game, but kudos to him, a huge accomplishment, and he's quite an amazing person and athlete, so, well deserved, Wall, congratulations.
He's the only second male basketball player to hit the thousand.
In the history of EL, Troy Barneys and him.
Troy Barneys was the first, yes.
Yep.
Who was?
Troy Barneys was the first.
So it's very awesome.
Very nice, awesome. Consent agenda for this evening, approval of this agenda, the minutes of our January sixteenth minutes, and the certificated nominations of Jennifer Corey as a teacher, social worker at RETC SOS. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. All those in favor, moves us forward very well. Public participation, do we have anyone from the public out there that would care to share something that's not on the agenda that we need to cover this evening? Seeing no one hopping right out of the bed, we're just moving right along, I like this pace. Superintendent's report, what have we got going, Katie?
Well, I thought it was really important because, you know, I've been given feedback, we like to get heads up on things, so I'm trying to be better about that and improve on that. So I've invited Shelley Mogul to come, and she has two teachers with her, Jen Bronfels and Karen Terio, and Scott and I are the principal. As remembered, last year, we went through a very big thing about the proficiency-based grading, so Val Ackley, our instructional coach who works closely with Shelley Mogul's office, has been working very diligently on how to convert the four-point grade to the letter grades. So we're going to explain it to you so that when letters go home to parents this week, you have the answers in case you get them. So I want to make sure you were in the loop.
Always good to be prepared.
Yes, exactly. So...
Alright.
Everybody got one up here?
See if we can... Now, Tanya and I did try this before. So we'll see. Hmm, ah, there we go. I know, just hang on one second. Think I've got it, Tanya. It was being sluggish. Let's give it a try. Good. Okay, so, as Katie said, we have been working, really Val, I would say Val is not here to talk to you tonight because she teaches math at USM, and this is one of the nights she teaches. So I told her I would try to do her work justice tonight and explain to you what's been going on. She's been working very hard to get this right. So the first thing I would want to say is that all of the decisions we've made about the freshman record have been, had one primary filter, and that is what's best for kids. Because when we ended last year and knew that we were changing back to a traditional grading scale, and knew that our students would, would be having their transcript, have sophomore, yeah, I don't know, sophomore, junior, and senior year with traditional grades, and have that one year of freshman grades look different, we had a conversation about what our options were. There are schools that have generated transcripts like that for students because they've made changes to their grading system, you know, in midstream. We really felt like to write a school profile that accompanied the transcript that explained that well for colleges was going to be challenging. And we felt it was best and fairest to our students to give them a transcript that had consistent grading system across all four years. So that was why, I don't know why. Yeah, it's just being slow. Okay, wait. Here we go.
While they do that, does everyone understand what a school profile is? It's the explanation that we send out from the guidance department to any of the post-secondary institutions that explain our scoring and grading process and what the scales look like. For us, a 93 to 100 would be an A, for some schools it's 90 to 100. So it's part of that explanation, so that's what the profile is, and so that's why it becomes an important tool that we had to work on getting that alignment.
Right. So we made a decision that the best thing for our, for our students was for them to have a transcript that had one type of grading on it for all four years. Now, the challenge that presents is that the scale, the four-point grading scale, is not meant to be converted to the 100-point grading scale. So there are ways you can do it, and I'm going to tell you what would have been the easiest way for us to do it, and why that isn't what we did. I'm telling you, this is not, I'm just going to talk, and we'll let, maybe Scott can play with this, let's see if he can get it to be nice. You have it in front of you, so I'm going to reference this and we'll continue to work on that. So if you flip to the backside of the handout I gave you, you're going to see a table. When students ended the year last year, they had course grades, and those course grades were somewhere from one to four for each course. And that course grade was an average of the scores they earned on all of the targets in the course. So it landed somewhere between one and four. Now, if you take a look at the table on the back of this page, logic tells you this should have been something you could do really quickly. I could have just said, oh, Scott has a three in English, and so that equates to, on the College Board scale, which is the nationally-used scale, four-point scale that's used by colleges, that equates to a B. So, great, let's just use that scale. Well, here's the problem we uncovered. There's multiple things that came into play here. One, we listened to a lot of feedback, you all listened to a lot of feedback, from parents and students about whether or not fours were readily accessible. Did students really have an opportunity to go for a four? Was that opportunity something they had to choose to go after, or was it just part of what was offered to them? Were students motivated to go beyond the three and get a four? Because we had said a three was what was acceptable, three was proficiency. We also kind of said to teachers, when you think about a student who got threes on every target, do you believe that that body of work is B-quality work? And pretty much, they said, no, we really don't think it is. We think it's higher-quality work than that. And we looked at the data for the course scores, and we saw that there really wasn't a lot of course scores that were in that upper quadrant, like 3.75 and above. So one of the things that Val did was to meet with every freshman teacher and talk to them about what, what they actually had provided students for opportunities to go beyond the three, and how readily available those opportunities were, so that we could get closer to what we thought the, the maximum score was, that was a reasonable maximum score for kids in courses. And so what you can see on this chart is, on the far left, you can see our starting point, that's what I just described to you. Students came out of freshman year with a grade that was somewhere between one and four for every course. Okay? After all those things I just described to you, we came to a decision that we, we really didn't have students working in a true one-to-four scale, that really, in terms of what they're, what they were able to achieve with, what they were able to achieve in classes, really was more like a one-two, a 3.24 scale. And when we did that, what that meant is that if students got all threes on their targets, that fell at an A-minus point in the traditional letter grade scale, and that felt right to us. Teachers said, I feel like if students got threes on everything I asked them to do, they did A-minus work. So to us, that felt right for kids, it felt right when we talked about what we were asking them to do in their learning. So we adjusted our scale and made it a new working scale in terms of doing this conversion, so that we didn't think about four being the top end of the score that kids could get in a, in a course. So if you look down in the bottom of the chart, you'll see I've played out an example for you. So, and I want you to look at the one that starts with a three. So imagine a student got, had English freshman year, earned a three in that course out of four, that's the way we would have thought about it at first. Now, we say, you know, we're saying it really wasn't an opportunity to get a four in that course, three work isn't really B-work, we're going to consider it now a three out of a 3.24. So that was our first step in the conversion process. Now, what we wanted to do then is to be able to take that and make it, put it into the very well-known, nationally-used College Board scale. Because college boards, colleges use the College Board scale, they know the College Board scale. So here's what happens, colleges get grades from high schools that are on lots of different scales, and they have to be able to take those different scales and convert them to the scale they know. So what Val discovered was that colleges have GPA calculators, and so I've told you in this handout which one she used. She used the one that's available through Iowa State University. On their Office of Admissions page, they have a GPA calculator, and what you can do on that page is you can put in your grade on whatever scale your school uses. You can put in, I earned a 25 out of a 40, if that, if my school uses a 40-point scale, and it will convert it into the equivalent College Board score. So Val used that tool, and so she put in three out of 3.24, and the calculator told her that that was equivalent to a 3.7 on the College Board scale. Okay? So we did that to convert them to that standard scale. Then it becomes this easy, actually. Then you can use this chart on the back. Once you've put it in the standard scale, now you can say, what is a 3.7 equivalent to for a letter grade? You find the 3.7 range, and that tells you it's an A-minus. Okay? So here's what I want to point out, there's a...
Just so everybody knows, every student, every course, one at a time. So it was, right, it was every student, every class they took, went through this process. So that's why it took so long, is making sure every student's records were assessed and looked at, and then walked through. So I, I'm really proud of that, that we, that we really took, I mean, Val really worked every student. She was going back, she would meet with a teacher and say, help me with what you did, I need to understand what, how we arrived at this score, so, really went above and beyond.
She exported all of the data out of Empower. She met with the freshman teachers, talked to them about their courses. She's been doing painstaking, I mean, she's the right person for the job, she's a math person. And that's one of the reasons I kind of said, Val, I need your help with this, because I, we were anticipating that she was going to have to develop the algorithm for that conversion. That's why we tagged her originally, she was our Calc BC teacher. If anyone could come up with the math to do that conversion, it was going to be Val. Luckily for her, she found this, this calculator. But we still had to think through the steps. So what I want you to see on this handout is that right here where we converted to the College Board scale, we had to do that for us, our students in Auburn, because our procedure has always been that that score, this 3.7 down here, that's the score that we use in Auburn for our weighted GPA, which is what determines class rank. So in the program of studies, there is a section that says, if you take an honors or AP level course, the GPA you get in that class gets multiplied times 1.6. So all of that calculation goes on behind the scenes, all through, and then we publish class rank, senior year. So these, this number right here, in this step, this had to happen for us to continue to do class rank in the way we always have. Not in a new way, but in the way we always have. So if you go to the next step, where we assigned it a letter grade, again, using the College Board scale that everybody uses everywhere, we had to do that step, because if you look at an EL transcript, it reports out grades for courses with letter grades only. There is no numerical grade, like it doesn't say A97, A95, A96, it just says A. That's the way our transcripts have always been generated, so we needed to be able to report out letter grades for those courses. So that's why we did this step right here. So in our, if we follow our example across, that 3.7 becomes an A-minus, that would go on the student's transcript for the course. And then there's one more step, we do a simple percentage GPA, which is what goes on the transcript. The GPA that we use for class rank is not the The GPA that we use for class rank is not the GPA that goes out to colleges. The GPA that goes out to colleges is not a weighted GPA. It's just a simple percentage GPA. So it's the percent that you get in all of your classes averaged. It's just a simple average. And so in order to do that GPA, we needed a numerical grade. So here's what we did. When a student transfers into EL and comes to us with a record from another school and has letter grades, we have a scale that we use to assign a number to the letter grade. So if a student comes in, if Faith came to us from Lewiston and she had an A in biology, we would assign that A-ninety-seven for the purpose of the simple GPA. So we applied that same scale that we use with transfer records to these new letter grades for our freshmen. So that everybody gets... It's applied the same across everybody with one exception, which I'll explain in one second. But it's applied the same across the entire freshman class. It gives us the numerical numbers we need to calculate the simple GPA. I know it's a lot to digest. But we had... What we had to do is we had to identify all of the different data points we need to be able to generate the transcript that we've always generated. And for us, we felt like not making a change over to the scores and the grades they're going to have moving forward was going to create more of a problem. So this is why we did it this way. The only exception... I said there was an exception. You'll see on that table... So if you look at the examples down here, there were some students that went... Had course scores that were beyond that three-point-two-four. So first of all, if anyone... If a student had a course score that was above three-point-two-four, like this top example here, that automatically converts to a four-point-oh. Okay? So now here's the question. That normally, an A, according to this, is a ninety-seven. But what Val did do is she checked. And there were very few situations, but there were a few situations where we had students who had, in a course, scored a four on every single target in the course. And the decision we made was that that student should have a one-hundred for the number that got assigned to the A. So that's the only time that there was a variation from that ninety-seven.
That's weighted.
No, that is not weighted. That's only in the simple GPA.
Only simple.
Okay? This... Over here, this would be a four-point-oh. It's a four-point-oh whether over here I have a ninety-seven or over here I have a hundred. This is what factors into the weighted one. Okay?
So at the end of a grading term, quarter, semester, whatever...
Yep.
There's no such thing as report card anymore. I have a sophomore grandchild, and I'm still trying to understand what he got for grades. I'm not sure his mother even knows.
Right. You want to talk to that, Scott? Because now that we're back in Power School, it's the same.
They get the grades on the computer or laptop they take home.
Mm-hmm.
Is that easily...
Your grandson should be able to show you and his mom what his grades are.
Maybe he doesn't want to.
Right?
Each student has a student password... A login and password. And the same for the family as well. And guidance can certainly support any family on how to be able to do that. We have a handful of students, students' families, that do not have internet access. The student has it at school, but we know that sometimes that message doesn't get from the student to the parent. So we have a handful. And that's been the practice for the last eighteen-plus years, that if they request one, we would mail one home, which would just be the printout of exactly what they see in the portal from the student lookup side.
So just to tell you where we are in the process, this handout that you have is a handout that's going in with a parent letter. And in the letter, we made a statement like... That says, you know, enclosed in the mailing is more information if you want it. Right? Didn't bother to try to explain all this in the letter. A lot of parents are just going to kind of say, I'm going to check the grades, and then we'll go from there. But we are including this information if parents want it. And then the message that we're telling them is that we will be uploading those grades into Power School directly. When parents have parent access to Power School, there's a tab that's called Grade History. So once the data is uploaded, they can go to the Grade History tab, and they can go all the way back to middle school and see historical grades. So once they're uploaded, those grades will appear there in this format of As and Bs and Cs and Ds. And then the... And the letter says that if they would like to request a review of those grades because they don't think they're accurate, then they will contact Scott. And we'll have a process for doing that, probably Scott and Val. We'll sit down with the data from Empower, talk through the process, and we'll make sure that we haven't had any errors in the process. So that's the plan. The plan is that the letter's going to go out this week.
Yep.
And the data's going to be in there by vacation, by February vacation.
By February vacation, yep. That's what we agreed upon. As part of that verification, this is... These scores are the most scrutinized, verified scores we've ever had before, prior. I mean, I think Karen and Jen, like, when we do grade verification, they look at the number at the end. Does it match up the number that they have in the computer? And then we move on. What we worked on all the way through, from the first semester last year with this class, second semester, and then again today, today, through this process, was to verify every single score. Not just the course score, but every single one of those scores. And so by all means, we would be happy to do that verification. It's pretty sturdy. And so really, the conversation comes down to, I thought my student should have had a three instead of a two-point-five. And so that's where we can... We have that, and we have it identified with the teacher. And we can go back to that teacher to do that. And we really did a lot of that work with the teachers at the end of first semester last year and at the end of second semester. And then through Val's gigantic spreadsheet, like I said, she went through every single one of them and then tried to make sure that there weren't any trends that popped out, like, why is it that this student has all zeros in this course? Is it truly because they didn't do anything? Or was there a glitch in there? And so that's where she went back and had those conversations with teachers, dug back into Empower, and really were able to feel pretty sturdy about what those scores were in there. But it is very fair that if someone wants to have us verify that, that is good. And we're happy to do that. But they're pretty sturdy. Like, they've been really heavily vetted. And that we can go back through the calculation and make sure that there weren't any missteps in that calculation phase. But as far as what the teacher was saying that the student earned and acquired in their demonstration, it's pretty solid. And that's a credit to Val and those freshman teachers. Those freshman teachers worked incredibly hard to make that happen. And that was a big shift because we had to do that, like I said, at the end of first semester and second semester last year.
Any questions? Yes. Val, start with Pat.
So the one... The zero to four grades, you said, will be replaced in the historical grade category with the new one. Is there any backup in case someone, three years from now, says...
So the... So the data that we converted is in Empower. So those... Like, these original starting point grades are in Empower still.
So those are still in there?
Right. They've never been... There've never been grades for freshmen in Power School. We're going to put them in fresh as converted... In their converted form. And we do still have the backup.
Okay. And we have the spreadsheets.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And we have all of the data, all of the... If I was a freshman teacher and put in all my assignments, that's all still live in there, too. Because we're still using Empower in K-8. Students are still in there. It's still a live platform we use.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
I just wondered if there would be issues down the road.
It'll be as secure as the historical data for our juniors and seniors right now.
Okay. Absolutely.
Elfrida?
That was a good question, Pat. Really good question. And it's good to have that backup. I just have to say thank you so much to all of you who've worked on this. Your action research is really well worth it because this has been a big thing on the parts of a lot of people who really were concerned about what's going to happen when the standings are at the end of high school and what's going to happen when I want to get my kid into high school and apply. This is so big. And I mean, I just like feel myself like exhaling, you know, really deeply because it's what people have been asking for. And thank you so much for doing that. That's time well spent. And I think... I think you'll be able to move on to other things after this.
Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, we would have loved to have had it out earlier, without a doubt. Our summer was spent transitioning from Empower over to Power School. And so doing a lot of the setup of moving those standards over. So we kind of had to wait and get ourselves situated. And we knew that that official transcript record, you know, these kids are sophomores. So it's urgent as it feels for parents and students, we knew we did have time. So we had set ourselves a goal of the first semester. So we're not too far out of that. We've worked really hard to get there. Val's worked incredibly hard. I can't say that enough. And then we asked Jen, Jen Bronfeldt and Karen Terrio, who are department heads, to come and just talk to you a little bit about what their role's been in the process. Because we obviously didn't... As Jen will tell you, she was just... She... When she said she would come, she's like, I'm not going to have to answer questions about the math. And I was like, no, you can defer to me. So we knew going in that it wasn't... It wasn't really the best use of our time to have the entire department head group, let's say, trying to figure out this conversion. So we did a lot of the legwork behind the scenes. But I want them to talk to you about what we did once we had it figured out and how they've been involved since, so.
So I'll start. Val did an enormous amount of work. In my twenty-one years here in Auburn, I have never, ever seen grades scrutinized like this. It's quite something. So we got the information from Val. And I'll back up to September. Each department started to look at all of the targets. And we decided that we needed to pare down and just come up with a list of essential targets. This doesn't mean we're not going to cover all of them. It just means we want to take a look at the ones that are essential. These kids need these to graduate. And so we came up with lists for every grade level. And we took a lot of time to do that. And then when we got this information from Val, we actually went around with her giant spreadsheet with every student, with every grade they've ever, you know, received their freshman year. And, you know, in the English department, we met with every single freshman teacher and discussed every individual student and said, okay, you know, this kid, they're close. You know, out of the seven targets, there's only one that they got, you know, a two on. So are we confident that this person, you know, deserves this grade? And it was that detailed. We went into that much detail with every single student.
Excellent. That's excellent.
We did the same thing in all the departments. In our department, in the foreign language, world language department, we took a look at the... We got a giant spreadsheet of the kids who were incomplete and not receiving credit yet for the course because they had a score of lower than a two on a target, at least one target. Some had more than one. And using our... The reflection we had done and looking at which learning targets were now considered essential and which ones were perhaps, again, not that they're not important, but not something that we would feel should hold them up from receiving credit in the course. We were able to then give Val the okay to this student should receive credit or this student should not receive credit because they did not meet the proficiency in the essential targets. But we had that opportunity to reflect with every single kid who was incomplete. So we had some really good conversations about what we felt was really important, what the core material was we needed them to know to say they had passed the course, to receive credit for the course. So it's been, I think, a very good process for the departments to be able to reflect on that.
I think what's important to hear from the teachers, we really... I mean, Val could work by herself, and she did, she would think. But what we really kept saying, we've got to go to the teachers to make sure their voices, that they're saying... Because it's going to be on them, you know? So we want to make sure they could say, yes, I agree with what you're doing. I agree with the score you're giving. I agree with the grade. So that was really important to us, is making sure we're not going to post anything until the teachers say, I can feel comfortable standing by the grades my students have.
Great.
And that was really... It took extra time because we... They had to be updated on, what's the math, you know? Or what essential... We had to take the time on the essential targets. Some of them had to go back and look at their evidence. Okay? Looking back at the evidence, or what are they performing now in my class? Well, they're performing now in my class differently than they were performing last year. So it took a lot of back and forth. Do we feel confident? Can I confidently say the students know what I want them to know? So I think that was really important in this whole process. It wasn't Val alone in isolation. It was trying to go back and forth and asking questions.
And just to piggyback on what Katie said, I think for me, the most refreshing part of it is that the conversation really was about giving credit because a student had demonstrated the important learning, right? It wasn't that whole thing like, did they get that paper in just at the last minute and bump their average over the seventy? This was conversation like, okay, you had... I mean, poor world language. We've been working on their targets for a long time, and I think we're, oh, fingers crossed, we've figured it out finally. But we were... I mean, they had a lot of targets. And we knew they had a lot of targets. But to be able to say, you know, we're still teaching all of that, but we know that proficiency on all of it is too much. But proficiency on some of it is absolutely necessary, or you're not ready to go on to French II. So... But to be able to go back and say, I can see that on those targets, they're good, and they should get their credit. I mean, that was... That's refreshing for me, to have it not be about a number. I just... I feel like I need to say that because to me, that's so important. And it's been one of the best parts of this work for me. So even in... And I think we're working really hard to preserve those conversations and keep the talk about learning, even though we're back in the hundred-point scale. It's hard, I'm going to tell you. It's very hard. But I think the teachers are working really hard to do that. And it's one of the things that I will continue to support and fight for, is to make it be about learning. So the other thing I would say, people, I always urge people to remember about these grades when they see them, is that there are things that are not in these grades that are in the grades now. I say that because I... This... Like, if I got an A in a course last year, that was based on my final demonstration of learning. If I got to a three on my targets, didn't matter if it took me six times, didn't matter if it took me one time. If I got to a three, then I have an A-minus. Right? It didn't matter... I didn't get penalized if things were late. So some of those things that we pulled out of the grade, they're not in this average. And they are back in there now. Or, yeah, they're back in there now. It's just going to be different. So people need to remember that. That's the only thing I say.
These scores are reflecting something different. And not bad or good, just it truly... The metric at the end is really reflecting what their learning was. And it was to take that and put into a metric that we understand. And now where we are, we've brought back, and there is value in that, to talk about timeliness and correctness and also the demonstration of learning. So where we are now is a blend of that, where this number doesn't account for any of that. And so, you know, we get into that natural comparison. So my three and Shelley's three come out at a ninety-three-point-five, but that isn't reflecting how many opportunities it took that Shelley and I to do that. It really reflects our demonstration of learning. That ninety-three now demonstrates some timeliness, some correctness. And there is value in that. I'm not... We shouldn't let that go. There is value in that. But the number now means it has that incorporated in it, and it didn't then.[1729.87]
Right.
And so, that's just important information to people to be able to have when they're examining this and consider it.
Do you wanna talk about what we're doing for students who might still be incomplete?
Oh, absolutely. So, through that process with Jen and Carrie, Jen and Karen, well, Carrie's usually with Jen, but Karen and Jen, so we have some of those situations because of being able to examine all of that data, that a student didn't receive credit. Now, we always have the conversation, "Does that mean that they need to repeat the whole course or we need to do something, some level of remediation and up to passing?" And we've always had those kinds of offerings, whether that be in the summertime or after first semester. So, what we're putting into motion is those, for those, our current sophomores, to have an opportunity, because we have such good data about what they did or didn't accomplish last year, to come back during the month of March. And so, we'll put together, we've already worked with some teachers of who's available and we'll be paying them to work with some students after school to remediate those places. So, if there were, last year, we're just gonna use some theoretical, if there were 13 targets and nine of them were the essential ones and they missed one, and so they missed out on that credit after we go through this calculation, if they need to come back and repair and demonstrate that one target or two targets, you know, where's that line? And that's the conversation we've had with teachers of, "Do you need to repeat the whole course or do you need to get up to passing?" Very much the mindset that we've been following for the past many years, then that's gonna be their opportunity to be able to bring that freshman score up so that they can receive the credit. And so, that will also be in the letter that we're sending home. I think we've had some conversations, like, the first week of March would be English, second week would be science, third week would be so, something like that, so that they are having those opportunities to come back and hit those repairs. I just examined-
Mud week. Mud month.
Mud month, right. We're gonna have Ice Week coming up, February break, and that's a different conversation for our seniors, but we are looking at mud month from our little March madness. Not, when you just look at the scores, like, and we examined another student today, there were, there were 12 targets, and the student didn't receive credit because they scored low on one of them. And then, once we were able to examine what, that one happened to be an essential target, even though when we did, ran the average, the average would've brought them up to the 2.5, but the teacher said, "That's really an essential and I'm more than happy to do the remediation. We can do it now. We can do it March. I don't care. Let's just do it." And then, that student is, can receive the credit. Because now that we're back to that credit place, we need to be sure that we're given those other opportunities now that they can see what it looks like in a metric that they understand, and we have the data to be able to do that, to offer that remediation.
So, that student's grade on the, in Power School would be an incomplete, just to be clear, not an F.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
For the questions?
Wow.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. I know. We'll, we'll let Val know.
She, she's really good with the math. We, we both got many, many late night texts. "What about this? Does this make sense? How's this looking? It's Sunday afternoon." I'm like, "What are you doing? The Patriots are supposed to be on."
Must've been commercial time.
Constant, constant. And so, it was, "I'll be in the office tomorrow morning. We're gonna," you know, she really went into it with a lot of good thinking behind it and always, always, always with the mindset of what's gonna be best for kids. We're not going into it with the punitive mindset, but we're very much, "How can we be fair and how can this truly be reflective of how the student demonstrated last year?" And much of that came back to, "Let's have those conversations with the teacher."
Kudos to Val. Before Scott, you all dismiss, I have to, I'm gonna bring a communication up around grades. Just to give an FYI, Lewiston is having big discussions on moving their passing grade from the 76 to 70. There will be an article in the paper, it was supposed to be in today, we didn't see it, right?
Still working on it.
Okay, there's still, Bonnie Waschek is working on it. I will be quoted to say that we are not, at this point, willing to look at lowering the bar for our student achievement. So, Auburn will still hold steady at the 76, but I wanted you to know there was discussion. We looked at our percentages and they're pretty in line with what we've done in the pass percentage-wise of incompletes. And really, we're doing more to get kids in to do their incompletes and get up to passing. So, we're feeling comfortable that that bar should maintain at 76.
So, when our kids go to LRTC-
Yes.
-how are they graded over there at LRTC? All together different?
All together different. That's a whole different conversation.
That's a conversation that we've been having for the last two days, and we're working on a very equitable answer for the kiddos right now because LRTC scored on a 70. Lewiston High School was still at a 76. They left it up to the receiving school to determine what to do with that number. And so, Mary Beth Galway, our department chair for guidance, and myself, and Lewiston High School and LRTC have been having a lot of conversation about what that's gonna look like.
Good question.
And is that, how do I take the pass fail and put it into a GPA? Do I do that? Do, you know, if I have a student that had a 72 over there, what's that gonna look like now?
From with college.
So, I just wanted you to have a heads up, there will be an article in the paper of Lewiston having discussions on lowering that. We are not in those discussions. Okay.
What's the reason for that?
Too many, I would say, yes, too many people not making the bar.
What does that?
Our students are doing well in the bar. We did a check and we have about 10% not meeting the bar, but that's pretty much on par with what we've been doing with a 70. So, it's not any different if we were a 70 or a 76. I think they're seeing a wider gap. They also require something we do not require. So, this is a big difference. I think that's a good question. We do not require our targets to be scored on a 100-point scale. They do. So, we do, the overall grade needs to be at a 76 or higher. Teachers determine when their students meet or do not meet a target, but it does not impact the overall score of the grade. That's much different than Lewiston. They score the targets on the 100-point scale and the overall, and they all have to be above a 76. I think that's where their rub is coming. I, that's why I don't think we're seeing it because we're not, our targets are, the teachers take the evidence and they say, "Yes, you've met," or "No, you've not met." So, I think that's the big difference, why we don't have to look at it. But we're watching the percentages. Bonnie asked for the percent, so you'll see that in the paper.
We started actually tracking that right around Thanksgiving time. And it was in conjunction with us asking our teachers to look at their student growth measure, which is part of what would be in their PDCA. And so, that kinda gave us some data about what to do. And so, we had a lot of conversations and department heads of, "What does that data look like?" And then, "Let's pull out what we're talking about with chronic absenteeism so that we can be looking at those students who are attending on a regular basis and then also the ones that were, that were in that 70 to 75 area, which is not uncommon to what we had done before when we were at a 70. Let's start looking at our 65s to 69s and really start trying to identify what are those students' needs are, and let's get ahead of this now and start identifying what could happen on our, what we would call our typical remediation strategies, which are right there in the classroom with the teacher." So, we started that work early on and I, you know, we're still in this growth process of what that looks like, so I can't tell you that that's the silver bullet, but that's good work that we should be tracking and monitoring anyway. And the other piece that will, we have more incompletes, but I'm not, I don't look at that as a negative. I look at it as, "You still have some things to be accomplished in order to get your credit." And I think that really honors that mindset of, "Learning is a constant and time is the variable." And so, the student isn't losing out on that opportunity to have that credit.
I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. My percentages might be different. Bob, you have to give me 10 more minutes. And if we're really on task, we will make it. Thank you. Okay, so-
Thank you.
I'm gonna push the budget goal because I don't think it will take that long. And we just added meetings, which you probably would've said, but I'll, I'll, we are gonna meet every Wednesday. So, next Wednesday, we'll be in a joint workshop with city council. On the 20th, we'll be in a joint workshop with the council. And on the 27th, we will be in a joint workshop with the council starting at 6 o'clock. So, we're gonna do a quick budget focus, only because I wanna hear your voice. You know what I do. I meet with departments, every, every department we're currently meeting with, Adam and I. Every budget is started at zero. They must talk to their staff about what are the essentials to teaching and learning. They are coming in with additions to the budget to meet those needs that they have. You'll be seeing those as well. But I just wanna hear in your brain. So, I'm, I have a timer, Bob, I have a timer. For one minute, you are going to be quiet and write on your index card what you want us to be mindful of as we put the budget together. So, when you think about the budget, the school budget, what, and I have pens if you don't have one. Does everybody have one? What do you want us to be mindful of? Right now, I'm mindful of return on investment. I'm mindful of Vision 2030. I'm mindful of, it's a need and not necessarily a want. And I'm mindful of the things that you have mentioned on needs. So, what do you want me to also be mindful of in addition to that? Just be thinking. And then, you're gonna talk to your neighbor. But you have one minute. I'm setting the timer now.
No dots, Bonnie.
So, that's been a minute. So, Faith and Bob, you're gonna talk. Bonnie and Tom, you're gonna talk. The three of you are gonna talk. And I'm setting the timer for three minutes. So, try to watch airtime. What did you share on your card? Was anything alike, different? Three minutes.
Quality and live within realistic budget parameters.
Okay. I was too fast. I just put down needs first, additional teachers and necessities, you know, if there's a need for as, as far as classroom sizes. And if we need to add additional teachers, we have to, to keep our class sizes down. Because I think we all know that if we have a big chaotic class, our students aren't really getting what they need, it's kind of hard to learn in an environment like that.
Right.
And whether that's an additional teacher, adding classroom aides, instructional coaches, or however, whatever can help our teachers facilitate a healthy classroom.
Mm-hmm. Anything about that? I think it's fine, but if we go crazy in the budget, we'll lose.
Oh, for sure. Well, that's why I'm saying needs. Not, not if we're restricted.
Like in my arguments with the mayor.
Yes. A 0% increase is not really-
Well, he touched that and I said, "You can't."
It should be up to the-
I said, "Last year, the budget, school committee budget, passed 76 to 24. We passed on a landslide." And at some point in time, you have to-
Maintenance of facilities.
Increase your budget or the student teacher ratio will go crazy.
Exactly. And that's why I underlined needs. We're not asking for extras. We're not asking for things that are just-
Even emailed them today, told them, knocked the chip off the shoulder. He said something about, "Show me some respect." And I said, "When you earn it."
It shouldn't affect, the building should not-
He's elected just like we are.
Okay, so that's-
Yeah, see if we can-
And he, I don't mind if we're all treated together as a team. Then I sent him a thing, "We're all on the team." But when he comes out with his studs talking, sort of like blaming it on the school to-
You have one minute?
For the increases in the budget, I don't like that.
Because we were very reasonable last year.
Right. Well, we bailed them out. Because someone over there made a valuation mistake.
A big word.
Would they play?
Vangor.
Vangor? For the boys or the girls?
Both.
Both?
Boys or home, girls or at Vangor?
You going up there?
Of course.
Trying to rest regular season again?
Pick a spokesman for your group, who's gonna highlight the things that, you wanna keep in mind, then I'm gonna take your index cards.
You've got the silk voice.
Okay. So, basically, listen to teachers' needs, but with budget parameters-
With a reasonable budget.
Right. All right.
Okay.
Get it right fast.
Tom, we're ready on this.
I know, we're ready here, too. We got this, it's the threesome over here that's holding us up.
Pretty, grandson's gonna be sleeping.
Okay, so, we'll start over here. Bob and Faith, what did you all talk about?
So, we talked about the necessity to address needs and not wants. So, whether it's smaller classroom sizes, another teacher, or if it comes in the form of classroom aides or more instructional coaches to facilitate that classroom to be a healthy learning environment and to better serve our students. But we wanna remain as we always are fiscally responsible and stay within budget parameters. But again, we wanna just focus on needs and what our teachers are telling us.
Okay, good. Bob and, Bob, Tom and Bonnie?
We talked about return on investment. We're very concerned about the buzzwords, return on investment. So, we're concerned about that in relation to the school and anything else that we might do. We're talking about mindful transparency, that we need to be transparent in what we do. A big one for Tom and I, 'cause we go back a while, is maintenance of facilities on it that, we did a study a few years ago that said, "We should be spending at least $2 million on our facilities every year." And we're far from that. So, hence, have to say it, hence, that's why Edward Little looks like it does today because we didn't spend enough money in our facilities on maintenance. We're also, we're mindful of establishing a fair and equitable pay scale for our staff and the continuation of the implementation of Vision 2030, PBL, and teachers' evaluation and the cost it will be and how much longer before it's all implemented. Do you want these?
Yes. You pass them to my one.
Okay, we talked about a couple of things that had to do directly with the money, not going backwards because we couldn't have enough money and not allowing the discussion about the new school to affect the yearly budgets as we're going forward. We wanted to keep the students' needs as paramount. I also had being fair with the compensation for benefits to staff. There was a concern about the custodial availability in elementary schools, so that would connect with what you said. Keeping class size ratios, being mindful of that, not being afraid to increase positions if we need them, increasing ed techs if we need them, and keeping up with technology. I think that's about it.
Okay, awesome. And if you wanna hand them in to me and I can have them, that would be great.
I'll be able to read mine.
That's all right. I know, the only reason I, this is good for me, and we, when, when I deliver the budget, you can ask questions. It's just, this is good for me to be mindful of as we put the budget together. So, I really appreciate it. I have a request from Tom and Bonnie to look at 5:30 start times for workshops. How do people feel about 5:30 rather than 6:00? Dan, Alfreda, 5:30, can you do 5:30?
Now with city council anyway.
Yeah, can you, Pat?
I can do it.
Okay. Tom?
Yep.
Faith? 5:30? Bob, can you do 5:30?
That's not good for me. And next week, when you're in your workshop, I will be in Jamaica and I will, I will toast you.
Please have a pina colada for me. I'd appreciate it.
All of us, please. We'll need it.
Pina coladas for all of us. That would be-
Skype in, Bob.
Okay, all right. So, 5:30 for at least the next three with the city council, and then we can see how those work and we can continue them if we, if we feel 5:30. Thank you, everyone, and my, more? Oh, yeah, we have the quick policy. That's, that's an easy one.
Michelle?
Great, okay. So, we're on the second reading of Policy AD, which is the Vision 2030 policy. Any questions on that?
Bonnie just endorsed it, so-
I did.
Nice.
So, do we need a-
We need a motion to approve the second reading.
Need a motion.
So moved to second?
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. You've adopted that.
Okay.
And the Finance Committee hasn't met yet, have they?
Nope.
Had a policy, we just reviewed that. We just met with the city council, so Alfreda, we're gonna pass that. Do we have any other meetings? Anyone else?
Wellness met.
We did.
We did.
All right, go for it, Faith.
Okay, so, Wellness Committee met. We reviewed our policy, which we've been working on, and we decided that, last year, we sent out a one-page flyer that had bullets for parents to note the changes. And we highlighted everything, so it was a quickie's a thing and not a five-page policy for them to review. We also spoke about the On Life program, which I did not know about, and I wish I was was an employee of the Auburn School Department, 'cause there's lots of incentives, and not everybody's using it. Um, it's done through the MEA, and you can get up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per staff member, per year, in gift cards, for fun things you can spend on. Um, they can do an app on your phone, um, computer programs, help if you have asthma, there's a consultant you can speak with for help with that, um, lots and lots of incentives, personal coaches for whatever you need. So I'd highly recommend any employee to get on board with that, and at least get your gift cards.
Where do the gift cards come from?
You get to choose.
MEA benefit trusts, it's a motivation.
Oh. This, well, no, who buys them, MEA or Auburn School Department?
No, not us. Yeah, MEA.
Okay. That was one thing on the audit that they talked about with-
Right, right.
Anyways.
Yeah, they're not related.
Oh, no, 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 yes, not that. Um, and then we had a five-two-one-oh consultant there, and she's offering to, we always have one there, but she's more than happy to go speak with the schools, and there's schools that are not enrolled into that program, and that program has lots to offer for our children, and also lots of incentives there, too. So it was a great meeting. We got a lot done, we hadn't met for a while.
Does the five-oh-two offer, whatever, does it, does it offer incentive, incentives for our staff? No. No, okay.
I don't believe so.
Let's just step.
Okay, no. They do not.
I have three.
Oh, you, so they met, that's all right.
I have been to three meetings in the last twenty-four hours, plus this one.
Go, Pat, go!
You're on, you're on.
All right, really quickly, uh, the Share Center met last night, so I couldn't come to the building committee. Um, they're on budget, the same story, they need more space, they're getting huge donations of things from, especially from Liberty Mutual, and they need a box truck to pick them up, so that's their, their, uh, update. I did meet with Karen Millard from Community Learning Centers. Um, she's doing very well, she's getting the programs up to align them with the grant expectations. Um, she's doing incredible work with professional development for her site coordinators, um, I was really impressed with that. And they will be renewing the grant for AMS Walton and Sherwood Heights, and, um, they're averaging a hundred-and-sixty students in six schools. And then this afternoon, at, uh, thanks to Shelley, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met, and the grade-level, um, meetings are progressing very well. The kindergarten and the first grade are completing, establishing the essential targets, like you heard the, uh, high school teachers had done. They're creating new curriculum maps and aligning those targets. And I was especially impressed with the, the work they're doing with the data from the MEA and the SAT scores, um, to help the kids with prep for this year, but also trying to be mindful of, um, embedding these-
Strategies.
Strategies into the curriculum permanently. So, that's it.
Nice, well done, Pat.
Wow, Doug, Pam.
Okay.
Tomorrow, be Vangor.
Yes, tomorrow, we have the last season basketball game, I won't cry.
And Bonnie, we had negotiations?
We did have negotiations last week. Um, we met for the first time in formal negotiations with the teachers' union. Um, it was very interesting. We, um, it was interesting, and we're moving along.
Right, send away.
Send away.
So there'll be more.
Where to come?
And we're all up to date on the, uh, new building, EL Building Committee, 'cause we met last night, and you had the report tonight, so I think we're good there.
What's going on with that?
I don't know, there's some building somewhere up in the middle of Auburn somewhere. Anyway, the upcoming meetings, we are going to convey, uh, convene meetings on the next three, Wednesdays at five-thirty in these chambers. Uh, there'll be joint meeting workshops with the city council to discuss the progress on the new high school.
Could it be five-thirty to six-thirty?
Uh, it'll at least be to six-thirty. We'll do an hour in May, run a little more-
Five-thirty to seven.
Yeah, five-thirty to seven, I think is more appropriate.
'Cause we were looking at six to seven-thirty, so now we're doing five-thirty to seven.
Yep. And then we will have a regular meeting on the twenty-seventh, uh, that will follow that workshop, and then into March sixth and March fifteenth.
Thirteenth?
Just to spend every Wednesday together, we might as well accept it.
Get, get used to it, we're gonna be here every Wednesday. Budget work will begin in earnest.
Well, that will be something we need to-
Depending on how well we can do in the city council stuff.
Correct.
So we're meeting every Wednesday from now on?
Basically, every Wednesday from now on, till further notice.
Yeah.
Okay, they'll not be here on the twentieth.
Take the other stuff out of your calendar.
And there's no room for any future agenda items?
I'll bring snacks, I didn't today, because I wasn't-
That's okay.
No opportunity for future agenda items, you're gonna put those in abeyance for the next three months, then we can bring stuff forward. Yep.
Move that, will you adjourn?